It's 5:30.
Time to start the party.
I call this meeting to order as chairman of the select board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis. And in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020 dash oh four, this board is meeting electronically utilizing the Zoom platform. We previously gave notice in the public or to the public of how to access this meeting using Zoom. And instructions are provided on the town of Lee's website at leenh.org. If anyone has a problem with access, please call 603-659-5414, extension 112. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. We'll start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance specifically for the select board personnel. Let's see, Selectman Casper.
Here, Ellen.
You're there and alone. Selectman Bugby.
Oh, I'm mute.
I couldn't hear. Okay.
You're alone.
Got it. Selectman Brown here and alone. Um, the, the agenda, as, as I've tried to put it together is first Selectman or Select person, Casper has asked to say a few words at the beginning, so we will, we'll do that. And then we will follow into the library presentation. It's a PowerPoint presentation to give us the status of where they are on the project, et cetera. And from there, when they complete, we will move to the Conservation Commission. For questions, presentation, they did pass out a piece of paper or forward a piece of paper on wet soils, impact avoidance. I assume they're going to discuss that. And at the, at the completion of that, we will move over to the Town Hall Renovation Conservation Committee for their, for their discussion, if you would. Is that okay with everybody?
Sounds good.
All right, in that case, let's, let's start with Selectperson Casper.
Thank you. I'm going to read it. It's less than two minutes. I just want to make sure I say this right. Thank you for being here today. I want to acknowledge the enormous amount of time and energy and effort that so many of you have already put in to this. Some can count the time in years and some can count it in decades. This matter is a great deal. This matter's a great deal, and your willingness to not give up on it speaks volumes about how much you care. I want to remind everyone that aside from whatever hat we wear today, in the end, we are neighbors. None of us is doing this work for ourselves. Every one of us agrees that we have a responsibility to meet the needs of the town, care for our environment, and to do work in an affordable way. All of these points matter to all of us. I hope we can remember that we are all working toward the same goals. Conflict exists when one person has a need of another and that need is not being met. Today, we will find out what each need is and figure out how best to meet them. Many have tried to accomplish this before, but never has this exact team with this much experience ever taken on this challenge. I know with absolute certainty, this is the team that can get this done. I hope today, as you listen to each other, you ask yourself, what did I not know before? What did I have wrong? By asking those questions, we stop digging in to prove our own point, and we allow ourselves to see the things we may have been missing. With that, I pass it over to Annie.
Thank you, Katrin. We will move to, I assume, Annie, where are you?
I'm here. I'm here.
There you are.
And Karen will put up the PowerPoint and we will be ready to go.
Okay.
The library trustees thought that this was a very good opportunity since there are so many groups involved that we should give you as much information as we could. So we put this PowerPoint together so that we would hopefully not miss anything. And I'm sure there'll be questions at the end that we could deal with. So move right to the next one, Karen. These are just a few information tidbits about the library. We have 350 patrons per week pre-pandemic. The trustees and the staff kept the library open through the pandemic by offering online services, curbside services, and also many things that they were able to keep going and provide for the residents. Additionally, our library hosted 220 children's programs in two, in 2020, and that's a 26% increase. And as you can see, we loaned out quite a few items in 2020, 41,500. Next. So we serve a community many ways now and in the future. We have lots of reading materials that we hand, that we check out. But we also check out other things such as tents, tables, chairs, and we have meeting areas for people to use. We have 24/7 public access to Wi-Fi. Many people just drive up to the, to the parking lot and they have Wi-Fi access. We also added a streaming, streaming service this year. And patrons can, just by joining Hoopla, which the library has available, they can stream movies, ebooks, audiobooks, and music CDs. So the plans for our future include making the children's room more child-like, creating story trails for children of all ages, and offering community programs in our, in our much more comfortable space. So with the renovation and addition goals, we had two main ones. Making the library ADA compliant by installing a lift and increasing the square footage so that it's more spacious. Also, we're community-oriented space. The stacks will be relocated to the basement level, and that will make the main level much more flexible. The deck and courtyard area will give us additional gathering space in good weather. And the historic schoolhouse building will once again be used by the children of Lee. So the addition, we've been keeping within a tight budget and we proposed to add a modest addition with the basement. The two basements will provide additional space for stacks and storage. The open staircase and windows will provide light to the lower level. And the addition on the main floor will have comfortable seating and a large monitor for streaming content or presentations. The lift will enable access to the lower level for all. So the renovation will be accomplished in phases. Finishing the basement for the stacks, adding the lift for accessibility, restoring the schoolhouse for the original purpose of educational purposes, open space with low tables, cases, and chairs, and space for all types of arts and crafts for all ages. We'll reconfigure the current main area for better traffic flow and provide more interior space. And when needed, the new basement will be finished out also. So where we are. We've been working with SMP architects for over a year. They have provided conceptual floor plans and detailed drawings will be developed once the project is approved. Geotechnical tests performed on the site in April 2021 showed that the proposed, the proposed site has deep sand and gravel layer that, that has, that is acceptable bearing capacity for the proposed building. Civil engineering to develop a site plan, which includes grading and drainage, will be the next step. Approximately $600,000 in public and private funds is currently available. Active fundraising efforts will begin once the proposal project moves forward. The 1996 addition to the library is within the 2075, within the 75-foot setback to the town bog. That addition was deemed to have no detrimental impact on the bog due to the gravel-type soil and elevation of the building comparable to the bog. The planned 26 and a half by 24-foot addition will also be within 75-foot setback. In planning the addition, extending out from the 1996 addition was the most economical way for us to, to add on to the building. It avoids complicated tie-ins with the existing roof line, and it allows for continuous efficient space, better sightlines on the lower level. So with this plan, there will be mitigation and minimization. We've already discussed these with the architects, and some of the discussion included gutters, rain barrels, rain gardens to reduce and mitigate soil runoff. Drainage plans and site grading will be done with, by the civil engineers. No impervious paths will, will be there and will utilize and provide clear access to existing trails. The wetlands will be clearly marked during construction. Now I'd like to turn over to Anthony. For Anthony Mento is with SMP Architects, and he has the remaining slides for the presentation.
Good evening, all. I would ask that Jason McComb be let in. He's an attendee. I would like to participate in this as well, my colleague and the owner of SMP Architecture. He was actually at his home office working on the final slides.
Can you do that, Karen?
It's all set.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Jason.
You were let in.
All right, I get to sit at the adult table.
Yep, you're welcome. Do you have the slides or you need me to share?
I, I, I have the slides up on my other screen.
Okay, super.
All right. All right. Can everyone see the, the graphic image?
Yes.
Look okay? Thank you, Annie, for that lead up. I'd like to just take this opportunity, as Annie said, we've been working with the library for over a year. I believe it was last, it was January of 2020, pre-COVID, that we first met to talk about the goals for the project. What I'd like to do is just walk through the various options and iterations, very high level, not get into too much detail, but really just see the process that we went through over the course of, of last year to really arrive at the solution that we, we've been presenting. So what we're looking at on the screen is the existing condition site. You can see May 6th, so just over a year ago, was our first presentation with the trustees. And this presentation was all about how could you add on to this building and expand it yet again? So we looked at four options. So the first one, we called simple extension. The purpose of this was to not only look at how you could add on, but where the big picture pieces of the puzzle go. Where's the staff? Where's the program room? Where are the stacks and the, you know, the big pieces of the programmatic components? So in this option, we maintained the front entry. We relocated staff into this area. We used the historic piece to create the program room, and the addition came off the end. There was a variation on that that we called east side, which was really about moving the entrance. So we proposed moving the entrance into an interior ramp up into the library proper, maintaining the staff area where it is, still putting the program space in the historic portion, and still maintaining an addition on this end. What that did was it created an opportunity for an outdoor program space off the kids' area. Then we looked at a modified version of that for really just where could staff go? And we also started to look at tucking an additional bathroom in there, as you know. Restrooms in libraries are important. We looked at creating an angled courtyard, so maintaining that front entry, and then modifying the addition in a way that really starts to create an outdoor space that could be programmed and used, that could really engage the historical society building in a new and unique way. And then we looked at one more option of that that we called on the angle, which was about creating this visual sightline from the parking lot back to the trailhead that exists at the end of the library. Again, you know, creating this outdoor space between the historical society, but it was really about getting more square footage into the library program. So after that first meeting on May 6th of 2020, we met with the trustees and we made some decisions. We talked about pros and cons for each of these options. And we looked at advancing this design on the angle to another level of detail. So we did that. We came back on May 20th of 2020 with an expanded design where we started to look at how could stacks layout? What does this outdoor space between the historical society and the adults look like? What could it do? What opportunities existed? As well as the interior layout in terms of staff and the stack space. So it wasn't too long after this, it may have been exactly at this meeting that we realized that this may be too much of a project for the library to, to take on, both from an impact on the site, but a cost perspective. So this was, this was growing into a more costly project than what had been identified. So we took a step back and we looked at some of the other options again. And in June, we came back with a version of that east side extension. So again, this maintain the front entry, created a new vestibule. Rather than a program room, we started to look at utilizing the historic building for the children's space and really bring it back to that educational component, that one-room schoolhouse idea where we could really restore and preserve the building, but use it in a new way, really adapt it to, to be the children's space. Still relocating the staff, so pretty significant interior renovations. And then this small addition on the end. This started to incorporate a lift down into the basements. And here's where we started talking about using the basement in a different way and making it accessible. It also incorporated a restroom and a little hospitality area, Janir's Clause, sort of the core pieces to really improve the, the functionality of the library. So this started to gain some traction. We really liked where this design was going, so we continued to advance it. We came back with another iteration in July. Again, really starting to develop it. In this option in June, one of the issues was the sightlines through this space and this vertical lift really created an impediment to that, you know, creating this as one space. So we looked at potentially moving the lift back into this corner and just reworking some of the programmatic elements. Continuing on, so then in July, so late July, we issued what we call the schematic budget set. So this was getting out of the presentation, getting out of the, the fat markers, if you will, and getting more into CAD drawings where we could start to get to a finer level of detail. So this was the plan that we issued, that we issued a whole set of drawings at that point. By this time, we had, we were prepared to put a budget to this project and really see where we're at. So this set of drawings, we did do a budget with milestone, and it came back a little higher than what we were hoping for. Not surprising. I mean, we really looked at the scope of the project in detail, but it was more than what we thought we could move forward. So then we continued to take a step back, and in November, we looked at three approaches for how we could look at the project differently that really took core elements. So each of these three approaches, we considered further compromises on the scope of the project to really keep the budget. The first one was a renovation-only concept where it was really all interior, no addition. We were still reworking the front entry, creating a vestibule. We were still moving the staff. We were still keeping a lot of the core interior programmatic elements, but this was really a significant compromise to providing the space needed for the library in terms of additional stack space, comfortable seating, and really make the library what, what it, what it should be and what, what it's trying to be currently. So this option looked at just doing an addition on the backside and then minor renovations in the layout in the space and really maintain the core library as it exists today. And while this gets them additional square footage, it didn't meet a lot of the other needs of the library in terms of making this historic space more functional or really highlighting the historic piece of it. So option three was a combination of renovation and addition. This brought the lift back in so that we could utilize that basement space in a new way. And it was a really solid first step to, to a compromised project. After talking about this, we landed on option 3A, which was an expanded renovation where we got into more detail of the needs of the stack space, the needs of the library to be able to accommodate the current collection as well as the additional seating and sort of comfortable social elements of the library that we'd like to bring in. So we're up to December now, and this is more in keeping with the plan that you've, you've probably seen more recently. We then advanced this approach, and we came up with approach four, which is the current concept that we're looking at. As you can see, these iterations have gotten more and more detailed, and I would in no way want to suggest that approach four is the final design, but this is currently where we're at in the process that we went through. This is currently the project that we're looking at, that we have budgeted. It's still a little higher than we'd like to, like to be pursuing, but we're getting closer and we're continuing to really refine that budget element. One of the big pieces of this is down in the basement space. While we're creating a basement under the addition, it's currently not the intent to finish it. So that would allow for future expansion. We are still incorporating the lift so that this would be fully utilized and renovating the, the main library as we had conceived originally. One of the other compromises is maintaining the existing staff and circulation space. So that was something that we were trying to limit the scope of work. So in a renovation project, it's really important that we draw that fine line of what, what are we touching and what aren't we? And that's a budget management aspect. So those were some of the things that we had looked at. And then finally, we just went back and looked at the current impact. So I understand, you know, impact on the, the wetlands piece is, is really a big part of this conversation. We, we, we believe that we've been practical in balancing the impact on the site with the needs of the library, with the budget constraints that we've been trying to work within. So we want to see what, what is the real impact? The existing library currently has 76.2% of the square footage of the built area within that 75-foot setback to the, to the wetlands. Our addition is 648 square feet and 52.6% of that, so 341 square feet is within that setback zone. Now, this is just built area. It doesn't take into account porches and other, other pieces. But in terms of overall impact on the site, we, we really thought that it was, it was a reasonable balancing effort with all the other pieces that we were working through. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Annie and the rest of the presentation.
Okay, who's at bat?
Chairman Brown, that completes our presentation.
Okay, we have any, any input now from Conservation Commission or from the THRC?
I'll speak.
Questions, comments?
Donald, Donald speak. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So the Conservation Commission has had a chance to discuss this prior to tonight without the benefit of seeing the architect's scenarios where he ran through different scenes. That, that, that hadn't been information we were privileged to see before. And it's, and it's interesting to see that. And first of all, we want to say that the Conservation Commission wants the library to be extremely successful. You're a valuable resource to the town. We all use you personally, our children. It's been a great place to go and see. So we want it to be a really good project and something that works well for everybody. Our task in looking after the resources is to say, have you considered? So we've been, have you considered the bog and what efforts have been made in order to reduce any impacts to the bog? And which is that particular site's most valuable resource. We are available for site walks. We're available for continued discussion with things. And it was important to us to see that, that there wasn't just one scenario under consideration. We really needed to see that there were multiple. And looking at the presentation you just made, one scenario that seems to be missing is one that looks more like a plus sign instead of an L. And that would have, that would go 100% of the way of avoiding the wetlands buffer. So that seems to be a missing scenario that might have been considered and stood, should still be considered. And it's great that we see that you're taking to heart the comments that we have made and you are incorporating those along the way. That's really positive. That's what we hope for. That's why continued discussion is a very good thing. So you're doing that. That's, that's great. Love to see it. And a next point would be, we all, the Conservation Commission is also not privy to what maybe the Town Hall Renovation Committee or the former Town Center Committee has done because there's a lot of pieces to that chessboard up there that will have some things happen. And again, in minimizing impact to the resources, you want to avoid construction disruption where you are repeatedly going in and redoing sections or you're having to undo and redo and replace because you didn't have the end in mind. So with us not knowing what's the end in mind, we said, what is the final plan? What is the master plan for this lot? What is the right sequencing of who should go first? So that what you're doing doesn't impact or delay or cause problems with what the grand plan is. What is the grand plan? Like where will that new well go? Where does the final parking need to be? Where do the cisterns need to be? So that's something we don't know, but we raise it as a flag because the more times you're in there mucking up, the more impact there is to a resource. So again, we, we can, we, we want you to be successful. We're available. We appreciate that you're listening, and we would just like to see every effort being made. First of all, to avoid, and then how do we move on from there in the scheme of the big, big grand plan? That's it.
Okay.
If I could respond to an item that Ms. Jeans commented on about the plus plan. The, the idea of producing an addition off of the existing library from the center core, we, we looked at quickly. We thought about it. It didn't make it through our own personal review of what would be appropriate for this project because of the cost impact that we, we anticipated by, by building an addition of the size and scale, although it's not that large, it would have an additional roof impact, a snow load on and over the existing structure. And our, our concern would be triggering a need for a deeper-level structural review of your facility and needing to potentially upgrade the system to meet the current codes, which would, would be way in excess of what your, your budget would have been. So we, we pushed that aside. We continued to return to the small addition off the last addition, which is a nice clean gable end. By doing an addition off that clean gable end, By doing an addition off that clean gable end, it doesn't impact your your existing structural system, your roof load. So there'll be no additional impact where we can cleanly just extend that gable end and do our our own thing there. Um, so that's why we didn't bring forward a a concept like a plus sign that that you referenced. Some additional items, I think, once we get into doing the actual engineering and working with your civil engineer, there'll be um mediation, um, things that we need to do below grade to capture, contain and manage the water that sheet draining off the roofs. So that's still um to come. It's a conversation that we've been having. Um, I think it's a good conversation, healthy one, and something that's still ahead of us that we look forward to doing. Um, pertaining to the master plan, we agree completely. Looking at the whole site and what is being done is is important and how you best utilize this type site for all of the utilities uh is is a logical first step, so.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume that John Tappan will have some questions coming from the THRC.
Uh, my my questions at this point are not coming from the THRC, although I do have comments um from that committee. Uh, but my questions right now are my own.
Okay.
Um, and it has been pointed out the additional costs of um putting in addition to the existing building um in a different place, which I certainly recognize. Um, but if costs are a concern, that does not explain uh the cross gable roof and the bump out. Uh, the bump out which intrudes further into the wetland setback and a cross gable roof um with various wall finishes um which add to the cost and yet do not appear to increase the function of the building. Um, so if if cost is a limiting factor and if the goal is usable space, why a more expensive design instead of a simpler design which gets you more space? That's my question.
Well, I'd like, I'd just like to reply to about the roof, the roof line. We have looked at the the gable over the um deck already, and that can be reconfigured so that that is not would not be there. There'll be different, different, that roof will be straight. It will be a gable, gable would be on the end, not over the um deck.
So that means you're eliminating the cross gable. It's just going to be an extension of the existing gable.
Yes.
The a single ridge.
Right.
And does that mean no bump out?
No, that does not mean no bump out. That's just dealing with the roof.
So again, how do you defend the bump out which adds cost without adding function?
We feel that it has function. That is a is going to be a very important um meeting space for that addition. It's um going to be a conference room space. It's going to have um present uh monitor for presentations. It's going to be something that's going to be utilized by lots of residents.
Well, I I think that your architect could simply explain that. Um, if you, instead of spending the money on the bump out, um, which only adds twenty four square feet to the floor area, you instead just make the building a little bit longer, the addition a little bit longer. Um, you gain more floor area uh for the same or lower cost. And that additional extension is fully outside of the seventy five foot wetland setback.
Okay, we'll definitely look at that and take that un- under advisement.
Could Anthony Mento uh address that as well, is that possible?
Um, certainly. I think that um it's important to think about the environment that you're creating. Uh, the library, the town folk of Lee are invested in this project. They're excited. They're 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 donating money for it. Um, it's one thing to do in addition. It's another thing to make the addition feel comfortable and welcoming, and that includes windows. Natural light, looking out into the wooded area beyond is an important component, looking out and taking advantage of all of that, bringing the daylight in and making the space a great environment to be within. You you can do that with simple boxes, but simple elements that add dimension and diversity are key, and it adds that that special feature. Um, we've, we've tried to make savings wherever possible to be cognizant of the total project budget. Um, but we want to provide the trustees as special space that they're proud of, and that's why those windows are there and that bump out exists. And and um that's our perspective.
I I think that that answered the question very well uh that you want to provide a space that the trustees are proud of. Uh, the problem is that you have to, the trustees and the select board uh will need to sell this to the voters. Um, and the voters, uh, we have heard over and over um are looking for the uh frugal solution. The solution that gets them the most function for the lowest cost. Uh, you've already eliminated um a restroom, which you previously pointed out is important in libraries. Um, apparently a cost-saving feature. Um, and I think it is important to question uh just how how do you balance the desire for this uh shape that you can be proud of versus the function of the building? Um, and if it comes down to the uh trustees and the select board um are more interested in the shape they can be proud of rather than the space that they have available. And they publicly state that. Personally, I'm fine with that.
John, I'm, John, I'm looking forward to what the Town Hall Renovation Committee's comments are.
We we have a a set of them, yes.
And I wanted to say, I may be uh bowing out at six twenty five. I have a critical appointment that I must, must make. So um if you see me disappear, it's because I have to go meet that appointment.
Well, if if the meeting chair wants to, um, I I can move on to that. Um, at this point, I was just, it was a personal question that I was asking.
Can I just interrupt you really quickly from something? So I want to understand, make sure I understand. It looked like there was a special cost to that bump out and that the library was fundraising that specifically that extra amount somebody else was hoping to donate. Is that something I I understood correctly?
Yes, we have had donations um in memory of of people in town that have passed away, and um that is one of the things in the addition are things that are that have been spoken about as being memorials to certain residents.
It's possible you could have a cost of the simple structure and then to have the other things to be specifically fundraised for beforehand. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to say, we do consider that a naming opportunity, which, you know, as we, and Katrin, you'll remember about naming opportunities. Um, as we, as we get into um the act, you know, the active fundraising, that bump out, which will come up with a better name. Um, will, you know, will be a naming opportunity. And also um, we planned to have a table in that area and with that bump out, it allows that, you know, space for a table for the knitters to meet. We had a great time at under the tents this morning, but we're looking forward to getting back inside. Um, you know, and and or book club or a sma- a small gathering could be there. So we're trying to a a long skinny box, you know, I mean, well, as Annie pointed out, and as both Jason and Anthony has said, and I've said many times, these current plans are not written in stone. And when we get to the actual budget and see what money we have and what, you know, what we can raise, you know, we, but we'll have some hard choices to make. We've already made some very hard choices. Um, so.
Thank you. Yeah.
I, if 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 I could just um play off that, and usually I don't speak unless Annie asks me to. Um, I do, I I I appreciate your comments, John. I, it cost is always a factor. We're always trying to balance um the best design, meeting the programmatic elements for the least possible cost. Um, and as Katrinka did say, you know, this isn't the final design. Um, what we were really looking at is, and the elements that you're talking about are niceties. Are they mission critical? Maybe not. Um, can they be, can, could this be done a more bare bones way? Potentially. Um, what's the real cost versus the value of that, I think, is a question that hasn't been fully vetted. What we were looking at is a location that has the least impact on the existing structure. So for instance, the cross um approach that was asked about that Anthony addressed, moving that same size addition to a different location has a significant impact on the existing structure, the existing infrastructure, utilities, uh as well as the programmatic elements. We'd have to move the circulation desk and the office. So there's a domino effect to each of these decisions that all of a sudden become out of our control. Whereas here, we have some control. We could do the bump out or not do the bump out. We could do the gable or not do the gable as we go through um without really having to give up on the goals of the project. So it actually gives us um more opportunities to advance the design and make sure that we're meeting the goals on the right budget um for the trustees without tying our hands now. So that's, that's some of the things that we just weigh when we're, we're, when we're making these decisions.
And I asked Jonathan, excuse me, Anthony and Jason a question. We keep talking about budget, but as we all know, and you guys know probably better than anybody else in terms of the building costs, we're building things are good. They're skyrocketing. So, and I know we usually started out with like eight hundred thousand. Now we're down to like six hundred thousand plus whatever they can fundraise. What is that doing to your budget analysis? Because they're talking about, you know, prices coming down in twelve to eighteen months. Could you guys comment on those particular things? Because how can you plan this particular project based on, you know, maybe pre-COVID numbers or whatever like that? Based on now, prices are like, they're just through the roof. So can you guys comment on those particular things? How are you guys dealing with that particular thing? Don't smile, Jason.
You want me to take that, Anthony? Well, it's, no, you're asking a very relevant question, and it is, it is a daily challenge. Um, so I think there are a couple of things to keep in mind. One, our current budget for this project was done in late January. So yes, things have changed in the last four months, um and it's something that we're we're currently watching. Um, also, we want to keep in mind that we have a construction manager on the team who's not in this meeting, um who we have been keeping tabs on as soon as uh an hour and ten minutes ago, I talked with him about the project. So we're not currently updating and constantly updating the budget, but it is something that we want to pay attention to. And that's part of getting back to having some flexibility in the design so that we can advance it as we get budgeting. So we'll be making budget decisions and the um the uh never-ending value engineering conversation, which is really just scope reductions. We try and give ourselves as many opportunities as we can through the design to have those value engineering discussions as late as bidding. Um, so we'll have alternates in the project um that may or may not be able to be incorporated. That's just part of that process. And milestone helps us through that process. Um, and I really hope prices come down in the next twelve to eighteen months. I mean, really, it's the the pressure on the market is um is really enormous right now.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So my my comment would be right now is uh where are we going? What's the next step? I mean, we have a design maybe that we'd say, yeah, that's it. Uh, and at that point, you could say, okay, then here's what the cost is gonna be. And uh, you know, we could, we could take those two, those two things and build off of them to come up with a plan on how we're gonna get it done. What the budget would be, et cetera, et cetera. So so where are we on getting to the next step?
I think that's why we need to hear from the Town Hall of Renovation Committee to find out the the at last piece of the equation.
I I have a um prepared statement for that. I can go ahead.
Yep.
Sure.
So uh nothing said here should be taken as an attempt to prevent the library building expansion or the library building renovation. This is an an attempt to encourage the development at the town center to proceed in an open and careful way that makes the best use of the town's resources. These comments are based on the deliberations of the Town Hall of Renovation Committee. And I have three important points, and then if there's time, some supporting material. Uh, one, with all of the town center buildings possibly in play and significant site work needed and funding is a limited factor, we need a comprehensive plan so that A, we can avoid sequencing errors that will have us reworking parts of previously completed projects. B, so that we can combine tasks by trade to reduce total cost. Examples might be painting two buildings under one contract rather than paying uh for them under separate contracts. Uh, or rather than paying for low-impact development site planning for one structure at a time, develop one plan for the larger area. And we need a comprehensive plan so that C, we can make the best use of onsite alternate energy sources and energy-saving systems. Photovoltaic panels and earth-coupled heat pumps should be evaluated. This should not be an afterthought. Point two, this comprehensive plan needs to be developed to the maximum extent practical before any more funds are spent on outside design services that may need to be reworked. This plan needs to include a safe and adequate parking lot, a new well, a septic system, a loop road designed to accommodate fire, police and public works requirements, and a location for the fire cistern to serve the needs of the Lee Hill area. And three, the next step should be getting the larger site planning started instead of hiring contractors to proceed piecemeal. Now, I have some supporting information for that. The town center parking lot is unsafe. Seven of the twenty five spaces are fully or partially within the highway right-of-way. There's no driveway for the transition from the highway to the parking lot. The town center parking lot is inadequate. As it is, there are not enough parking spaces for library and town hall function needs. And correcting the safety issue will leave even fewer spaces. Correcting the parking lot deficiencies requires moving the well. Um, I'm not going to quote the the environmental regulation on that right now. Um, and but point six, moving the well will make it easier and less costly to install the septic system that the town center buildings are currently lacking. And redesigning the parking lot and driveway can lead to providing a place for the fire cistern in a lay, a layout that can meet fire, police and public works requirements for public safety. To date, none of the previous committees have ever produced a parking lot and driveway layout that meets the needs of both fire department and public safe uh public works department uh for maintaining those uh infrastructures. Uh, and that's my comments.
Well, they were very interesting. I'm especially interested in the fact of saying none of the previous committees have ever addressed any of these these issues. Um.
That's not what I said.
Okay, so repeat what you said for me.
I said that none of the previous designs have fully met the needs of um fire department, simultaneously fire department and public works department.
Okay, those designs, John, those designs were vetted. I mean, it wasn't like that. They just drew them up and we threw them in a drawer. And now all of a sudden, we're saying, well, they really weren't valid. And now all of a sudden, we're saying, well, they really weren't valid.
It was just about one week, a week ago, less than a week ago, that talking to people at the public works department pointed out that previous designs did not make good accommodations for piling snow. And that's completely valid.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
To, to arrive at a good site design that meets the needs of the fire department and simultaneously meets the needs of public works department for maintaining the parking lot and clearing snow and provides the safety that's needed, particularly for children in a parking lot going to a library requires a lot of compromises. And I think it requires putting plans out there that those public works and safety departments have a chance to study, to evaluate, to make changes to. And there's a lot of compromises because many of the things that you want to incorporate in parking spaces for safety work against what you'd like to, to put into them for, to make it easy to clear snow. And with funding, the limited funding that the town has, the town hall renovation committee is very concerned about spending money on things with it that will then have to be redone. Obvious examples is finishing a library, landscaping around the library, and then bringing in the well drill, well drilling rig someplace near the library to put in the new well and dig trenches to make connections to that well. This is, this is in no way trying to prevent the library addition or renovation. This is really just trying to provide the, the best part, best possible infrastructure for the town, for what the town is willing to pay.
And what does that do then to the plan for the town hall renovation?
That is a very good question. That is a TBD.
Ah, okay. And so, okay, it's a TBD.
Katrinka has something to say. Can we ask, let her speak?
Yeah, I, I just have a quick question on the placement of the well. You're talking about putting it near the library. Would that put it within the set, the setback to the bog or would it be further away?
You're on mute, John.
The well and wellhead, the requirements there is that it has to be at least fifty feet from surface water. But wells, the wellhead is allowed to be within the seventy-five foot setback. And that's in our zoning. But state requires it to be at least fifty feet from surface water.
And, and another thing, the THRC, the town hall renovation committee has made a presentation to the select board in terms of things to do for the town hall in terms of possible, you know, scenarios. And I think at the moment, the THRC is in a holding pattern because we need to have some charge from the select board in terms of how to proceed and if to proceed at all. So I think the select board needs to determine where we're going and make sure that everybody is on board in terms of what those particular goals are. Cause right at the moment, the, the town hall renovation committee is in a holding pattern. We've done what we've been charged to do. We're waiting for more directions and a possible change to our charge in terms of what, what needs to be looked at and, and what the town is going to pursue. But, so I think it's in the select board's purview to determine how we're going to proceed as a town. And I think this particular forum, I think everybody needs to get their concerns out so we can all hear them so we can, they can be addressed. Uh, because there's no sense moving forward if everybody's working at cross purposes. It doesn't serve the, any service for the town and it's going to cost us more money. So that's where I am. So I think we need to have more discussion in terms of where we're going, what we're doing and how we're going to get there, how we're going to pay for it and how we're going to proceed, so.
Well, I agree, I agree with what you say, notwithstanding the fact that you are on the select board. I don't remember, I don't remember having any kind of conversation that laid out all of those things. It said, it's up to us now because we're not in a position to be able to make these decisions. Haven't heard that happen.
We had a whole presentation, Mr. Brown, in terms of what we were charged to do. And we gave the select board options in terms of what to do with the town hall and what our suggestions or recommendations on how to move forward.
And if you can't move that forward, you have to come and tell the select board, we can't move forward. And I haven't heard that.
Well, we fulfilled our charge, so we're done with whatever we were charged to initially.
Okay, gentlemen, so let's take off all the different hats everyone's wearing for a second and let's.
Unfortunately, we're a small town, Katrinka, and we have to wear lots of hats.
I know, I know. So regardless of the past and what's happened in the past, I think what we have here is some pretty basic issues. So we need to make sure that the conservation commission is in agreement and alignment with the plan for the library. There will other be, the other plans coming up for the town hall, the new town hall possibility, and then the town hall renovation. And make sure that those are all in sync together. And then we need to discuss things like the stuff that's going to go underneath in the ground. And I think that we need to talk about what expenses are going to be coming up, but then we need to have a decision made. And then we can say to library, okay, so it turns out in the area that the library is going to be in, we need to put in this and this, and these are the dates we want to do that. So that then the library can go ahead and say, great. Then that means we can start on this day, on this other part. So, so that we can work together and then move things forward. So I don't know what we need to do to make those decisions. I know that you brought them, the town hall renovation committee brought a lot of questions to the select board. I'm happy to make decisions whenever we're ready to do that.
The select board, the select board, including Scott, we, we can deal with it. You're part of it.
Yeah. So I think we just have to come up with the questions that need to be answered and then answer them. We have a lot of hands raised, should we? Where do we start?
I, I was, I was trying to answer Chairman Brown's question. The town hall renovation committee is meeting tomorrow evening. And I think that if he feels that we have not done a good enough job of expressing to him what we think is needed, then that should be one of the things that our committee works on tomorrow evening so that we do a better job of that.
Sounds great.
All I wanted to say.
Anthony, mentor, did you have something?
Is that gonna be a Zoom meeting, John, or is it gonna be a sit down?
Uh, that, that's a Zoom meeting. It's already scheduled.
Okay.
I just wanted to respond to a few things that Mr. Tappan made. I, I, I agree with a lot of what you outlined. Having a master plan for this tight site, knowing where the well will be and where the septic and how the utilities will all enter, intermingle is, is a smart thought. You really want to do that. You want to do this once and not have to open things up and affect it and do it again and again. And normally on a, on a site like this, that's tight, there is a master plan that's developed. Sometimes it's done through an architect. We, we've done it with the town of Canterbury where we looked at everything in the village. We're organized and looked at it once and then slowly meticulously year after year worked on each item in a phased approach. Sometimes you work with your civil engineer. That seems to be a good step as well. Most of this has to do with access, parking, utilities, water, waste. That's all within the realm of a, of a civil engineer. I know that the town has someone that you like to work with and I would, I would suggest engaging them to look at how to do it in one fell swoop so that we're not. I think the library would, would gladly work off of a, a well, like municipal well that was properly done, that met the DES requirements that could be utilized for this space. Not, not going forward with this as a town, you know, the library is still trying to meet their needs. And that's why I think they move the ball forward to kind of get the conversation going and, and so I feel as though looking at this holistically is, is, would be a wise choice on the town's part.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? We're at the end of the rope as I see it.
Well, I think that, that there's some questions that the town hall renovation committee posed to the select board in terms of recommendations. And I think the select board needs to sit down and answer those particular questions, how we're going to proceed, how we're going to pay for it. I know part of that has started with the, the capital improvements funding plan that we talked about, but you know, we need to sit down and make those hard decisions because all these particular other groups are looking to us to lead the way. And we have to do that particular decision-making process. Hopefully the town's voters will support whatever we choose to do, but that's here and there. We have to propose something to them to have them react to it. But we need to make some decisions to move forward because we keep kicking the can down the road and we can't continue to do that. Other groups like the library are waiting, town hall renovation committee is waiting. And I personally, with my town hall renovation hat on, we've, we've fulfilled our charge. We're waiting for the select board to do their particular part. So I don't think there's anything that you're waiting for us for. If there is, somebody needs to say something, but right now we're waiting for the select board to do their thing.
So Mr. Bigby, when will we do that? I'm ready to do it now. What day? Give me the.
Uh, well, let's set up a meeting and just do it.
Do it, yeah.
Like I said, kicking the can down the road, we gotta make these.
I'm not a can kicker.
Well, I don't like kicking the can either because then you can hurt your toe. So let's not do that.
So what is your proposal? How do we, what do you?
I think, I think unless somebody has other comments in terms of what the library is proposing or what the town hall renovation, we need to sit down and do that.
Excuse me, Katrinka has a, Katrinka will like to talk.
Thank you, and I'll try to, I'll, I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to say that, um, okay, but anything that happens with the town hall, I'm assuming that you're going to take a big plan to the voters again.
Yes.
Which would not happen until a year, you know, it would be another year. And, excuse me if I sound a little frustrated, but I am. You know, that would, you know, the trustees have been working on this since two thousand and four and trying to come up with plans. Um, I do think that we could be allowed to move forward to do our civil engineering about our spot. We can certainly take wells into consideration. I, I think it'll be a long time before we get to final landscaping. You know, so I'm really not too concerned about having a picture perfect site. We need the space inside the building is, is what we do. And I just would hate, you know, Mr. Tappan has talked about a nine-year plan. I, I hope I'm here in nine years. But, um, I, you know, we'd like to, you know, move our little bit of it forward and being aware of the other things. We're not, we weren't going to mess with the parking lot. We're not messing with the, you know, you know, all that. So I just wanted to say that I hope that we, I just don't want to see us held hostage to a plan that may or may not happen. I mean, you have to be realistic about, you know, the work, you know, the work and what the town will vote for. The town has voted in, you know, for the library in the past, so.
Excuse me, I have a question. Are you, is the library not planning to replace the septic as part of this addition? Oh. I know that you technically don't have to, but I would strongly encourage you to do that.
That was, that was a, a cost conversation because of the, the greater impact on the other buildings because I think it does make sense. I see John nodding, yes, it does make sense that we, we group utilities. You have a, a core group of buildings around, around the parking lot. It only makes sense that you have unified utilities. And it doesn't make sense to burden this project with something that's much larger that frankly, we didn't, we didn't, we can't plan for what the, the rest of the town buildings are going to do. So I would, playing off what Anthony had mentioned earlier and Katrinka, the plan that we brought forward, there's really nothing in it inherently that would be an additional cost in terms of the grand planning. We're not putting an addition where you might put a well or where you might put a septic system. The impacts would be relatively negligible, so there really wouldn't be any duplication of work as part of this project. I, I think unified planning for the overall site is really important and should be done. While we haven't necessarily done this design with that in mind, there's nothing that we've done that would preclude that or add additional cost to the town that we could see. In fact, I'm looking at the site plan, really the whole front of the building, the historic building, part of the design maintains the existing oak trees, maintains the existing landscaping. In a lot of ways from the parking lot, you may not even realize that an addition was put on to the backside of this building. So we've really tried to be sensitive to that piece while we weren't necessarily planning for it.
Karen, I just wondered if, if Deborah could speak?
Yep, and John Tappin wants to speak again, too.
Unmute yourself, Deborah.
Deborah?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to mention, kind of playing on the idea of let's not wait. And I completely understand the big plan and, and that all makes perfect sense to me. But I, I just, your, your children are only five or six once. You know, they're only the tweens once. You're only a senior citizen once. You know, the, all these different components of your life, and we're trying to make this a true town center building, a comfortable place to come and be with your, with, with other townsfolk. And, and if you wait eight years, many children don't ever get that experience. And then adults move away. They, you know, whatever, whatever the situation might be. And I just wanted to call attention to that because having my children go through the school system and always be before the renovation, before the renovation, you know, and it was funny, they got hard hats, but it wasn't funny. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Anybody?
Yes. I, I wanted to address the, the time period that's been mentioned before, the eight or nine years. The town hall renovation committee has never considered anything like an eight-year delay. It was the possibility of up to an eight-year plan for the very last piece to be finished. And in one scenario, that last piece was a new office building. And that timeframe, eight years, came from, right now, the contract that we have for the leased office space can be extended to a total of nine years, of which we're about halfway through the first year. But the, over that period of eight years, it was expected that work would start early. And some of that first work is the site work around the library, doing the corrections of making that dangerous parking lot that your little children go to the library in, from making that safer. For the well, the design that's on the table right now, and it may not be the best, has the pressure tanks in the schoolhouse basement. If the well is there and you need to run electric lines and water lines to and from it going into the schoolhouse, well, you don't want to add that after you finish this, the, the library renovation in addition. You want to have that part of the plan. It could be that that's not the best place for the well. It could be that we actually need to build a separate pump house. But those things should be figured out first. Um, and so the, the Town Hall Renovation Committee has never been recommending anything like an eight year delay. Um, it's really more like a year in which these site plans are worked out. Um, it gives the library a chance to present, uh, their plans to the public, something that has not been done to date. Um, and give the public the opportunity to ask questions about it. Um, the public that, um, both, uh, it's their public money that's paying for it and the public that's going to use it. Um, and bring that outside of, uh, the group that has been working on it for so long. That's it.
And I think one of the things that maybe, I, I'm not sure if it's out there. I think it is, but maybe it isn't. Is in terms of what we proposed to the select board in terms of, uh, the timing of all these particular things. So really, I think it would be beneficial for everybody to take a look at that. Um, Denise, I don't know if you can tell us if it's still out there or if it's out there. But people should be aware of that. And I think one of the things I mentioned early on is in terms of this whole thing when I asked Jason and Anthony. About in terms of pricing. You know, it might fit in quite well. If we are doing this next year, hopefully prices will be down so you can get more bang for your buck. But I think it's a coordination of the library project with this expansion of the parking lot and the septic system being done and the water being done by the town. So that we can coordinate those particular things. So I think maybe that's one thing that, you know, maybe people can check out in terms of our presentations to select board. Um, and see what we proposed, um, and you can react to it in terms of what you like, what you don't like. Maybe we're totally bonkers, but, uh, the core people have been on that committee, been on the town center committee, so. There's a lot of knowledge there and things that we've seen, so hopefully you, uh, respect that. But definitely question what we're proposing, uh, because the select board needs to make some decisions and they need to make them pretty soon.
Can I say, I think that something we could do is we could look at the overall plan and then we could look at which things directly impact the library. And make sure to put those on the. Front of the list. I think showing the town that we have accomplished something, giving them something, something new, something special will be really helpful. So if there's three things that need to happen first, and then the library can fully go on and do what it needs to do. Let's do those three things first, as long as they make sense in the civil engineering and all that plan, so that we can. Move one step forward and then there'll be confidence will grow. So I, I think that's what the library is looking for.
And I think you look at the plan, Katrin, those two things, it's really the parking lot, the septic system and the well, excuse me, three things.
Great.
Those are, those are all front loaded. They're all front loaded.
Let's do them.
It only takes money, Katrin, only takes money.
And votes. So let's, I, I just think that that's the thing, uh, I think I, that we want to make sure, I want to make sure that the library trustees understand is that. Um, that is a priority and we do need to focus on, on that. I, I think it's a win for the town once this library is finished, so I want to get that win as soon as possible, but I responsibly and not. Skipping steps, I understand.
Scott, do you still have a copy of that presentation?
Uh, I think John has it, but I think it's, John, is it on the website or do you know?
Uh, what are you looking for? Are you looking for that Gant chart?
Well, I'm looking for the presentation we did to the select board, what, two, three weeks ago, four weeks?
It was recorded as well on YouTube.
Yeah.
Oh.
So I think that would be very helpful. If it's not on the website, can we have Denise put it up for us? Send it to her, because there's tons of information in there. It's chucker buck full of. You know.
Yeah, I, I was just scanning through the website. I, I could not find it.
Okay.
There.
Maybe.
I'd love to take a look at it.
Yeah.
Scott, are you saying that you want to go through the PowerPoint presentation again?
No, 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 no. I would like you to box it up and give it to Denise so she can put it on. So create a PDF out of it and send it to Denise.
Okay.
And Denise, would you put it on the website? What?
And also to Jason and S to them as well.
All right. Well, that'll cost them a quarter. They have to pony up some cash.
Ay, yay.
But I think that would be very helpful for everybody to understand what we propose to select where the select board. You know, can accept it and unacceptable, but I think it goes to some of the things that we're talking about tonight. And I think it would be very informational for people, so they understand what was being proposed.
So what is?
It's on YouTube.
Oh, yeah, it's on YouTube, yeah.
It is on YouTube. Is there a date that we can know that this will be something that we can talk about? Last few minutes, yeah. Do you want to plan on bringing this up at the next lecture meeting? What, what is the?
I think this requires a separate meeting, just like we're having tonight.
Okay.
The next meeting we have is June 1st.
Great.
So, um. I don't know, maybe we can do something next week.
Will the Town Hall Renovation Committee be ready? And Mr. Brown, will you have had a chance to review all those documents?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can get an opening next week that everybody can, uh, join. We can certainly do it next week.
Okay.
So what days are people free?
Scott. Our, our committee meets tomorrow.
Yep.
And so if there's additional information that we need to, to provide, we would certainly be working on that.
Okay.
Do you not have enough time, you think, Mr. Tappin?
Well, I think, I think, I want to look and see what we got and see who needs to attend and then we'll, we'll try and set a date next week. That everybody, that everybody can make.
Uh, okay. We're going to do that online or?
The only thing I can, I can't do next week is, um, Thursday, and I don't think you can either because you have that.
What? I'm sorry, what?
The only day I can't do is Thursday.
I can't do Wednesday.
Great.
Okay, well, let's, we'll, we'll, I'll get the, the ball rolling.
I can't do Wednesday either, so. Julie's on vacation.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, can we do, I can't, I can run the meeting, but I can't do Wednesdays. Can we do Tuesday at seven?
Tuesday at seven works for me.
Twenty fifth?
Yeah.
All right, so let's plan on May 25th at 7:00 PM. Can we ask, um, Denise to post the meeting for us and do whatever she needs to do?
Yep.
Uh, Scott, do you think the THRC is really going to be, um, have everything prepared?
I don't know what we need to prepare, John, because we made our presentation. We're waiting for input from the select board in terms of how to proceed. I don't know what else, I don't know what else we would need to do, John. Unless you know something I don't.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll have a good meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Awesome. All right, thanks, you guys.
All right, thank you all.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, because that presentation is on YouTube, um, do you really need anything else?
Yes, John, I need it from you so I can post it.
Yeah, it would be good to post it, John.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind.
Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate everyone being here tonight.
Good night. I have a. So I have a planned more meetings. I'm going to end everybody, okay?
Yep, motion to adjourn.
Uh, seconded.
Second.
Close it, Mr. Brown. Thank you, everybody.